Ten work session of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Ms. Burcham, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Maslin.
Here.
Ms. Ramsey.
Here.
Mayor Freiling.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Mr. Zhang.
Here.
Next item on the agenda, items for city council meeting of December thirteenth, two thousand and eighteen, council preview. Mr. Trivid, anything you'd like to highlight?
We've got a couple of public hearings, but I think most importantly, we should note that the public hearing for the conversion of P three into a private plaza has been withdrawn. So the two items that were relative to that are not on the agenda, and they will not be heard. And then we have a couple of ordinances to consider, changing the text of the city code, a resolution for Line of Duty Act for the volunteer firemen, and a resolution considering guidelines for when to discuss and how to handle school additions and capacity growth.
And just in case any folks are interested, when you say the item was drawn by the applicant, they then need to start the process over, or can they bring it back to council at their convenience?
No, if they decided to resubmit, they would be starting over.
Thank you. Questions, Mr. Trivid?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we open the floor to public comment. If anybody would like to address council on any of the items coming before us at our Thursday meeting, we'd be happy to hear from you now. Seeing none, we'll move on to the background presentations and discussion. First is local taxation and audit program update. Laura Overe, Commissioner of the Revenue, and Kevin O'Brien, Chief Deputy Business Auditor. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. We're going to dig right in. Seems a little loud, sorry. I wanted just to give you a quick update on a couple of things that have happened in our office, some things that, changes that we've made this year, and then to give you a program update on the audit program. So this, I know you all know this, but I thought since there might be citizens listening in for their benefit, it might be good to remind citizens that the Commissioner of the Revenue is a constitutional officer set forth in the Constitution of Virginia. We're elected to serve a four-year term, and I was elected in November and began in January of this year. The Commissioner is the chief assessing officer for the city, and we are governed by the Code of Virginia, section fifty-eight point one dash three. And that basically states that we are bound by law to maintain taxpayer information confidentiality. We are responsible for a number of local and state taxes. Most of the taxes that you hear about are the local taxes, the business license and B-Pole tax, the business personal property tax, meals, lodging, cigarette taxes, and so forth. We also assess a number of state taxes, and those are utility taxes and communication taxes. And then the last thing that a lot of taxpayers don't realize is that we assist taxpayers with their Virginia income tax returns and their estimated payments. So we are able to, if you come to our office early in the tax season, we can help you submit your Virginia taxes up to Richmond. In a few of the recent city council meetings, there have been questions regarding the sales tax discrepancy and why localities are reporting to the wrong jurisdictions. And we have implemented some processes in our office to try and catch these before they happen, or at least catch them early on, so that we're not having to submit reimbursements for months or years of previous incorrect reporting. So one of the things that we've done is we are now meeting with the finance directors and the commissioners of all three localities, Williamsburg, James City County, and York County. And we have created a sort of regular meeting, hoping to meet at least quarterly, if not more often, to discuss some of these issues that might arise. And I really want to thank Barbara for looping me into that, and it's been a great opportunity for us to work together collaboratively with all three localities. But I have been able to learn from those commissioners on the resources that they have to address identifying these sales tax discrepancies, and so we've implemented some procedures in our office to monitor that on a monthly basis. And then I am not going to read all of this to you because you have it in your presentation, but I just wanted to sort of highlight some of the things that we've been doing. When you have a new staff, it's normal to have processes change a little bit, some cleanup. One of the biggest things we did was a database cleanup. So we went through all of our business license database to make sure that we have updated information, that the businesses that are currently in business are accurate, and then also terminating businesses that had not renewed their license in many, many years. So just a really good way of cleaning things up and making sure that we can start off a new, a new term with a clean slate, so to speak. As you all know, and with your help, we were able to implement the disabled veteran personal property relief. And if you'll remember, when we proposed this to council just a few months ago, most of the localities in Virginia offer this. And I just wanted to let you know that the gentleman that brought this to my attention back in early February or March came up to my window just a few weeks ago, and he was in tears, and he said, "I just wanted you to know, I feel heard. Please tell city council, I thank them so much for listening to this concern and taking action on it." So I wanted to relay that back to you. I thought that was a really positive example of how we can all work together. Our office has also absorbed the meals, room, and sales tax assessments for the city. And I will say, it's a big job, and it was a lot of work to take on in our office, but I think in the end, it's going to be really beneficial for the city because it allows us to look as a whole at all businesses, particularly with our auditing program, and it allows us to really do a lot of comparison and make sure that all the numbers are matching up with the different reporting that various businesses have to do. We have also implemented standard operating procedures. So every function that our office does has now been documented with screenshots on how they do all of the different, use the technology and the databases in our office. And so this will be really beneficial if anything happens to a staff member or somebody has to, you know, stop working with us, we won't lose their knowledge, which will be really great. And then one of the other things I just wanted to mention, early in the year, during the budget process, we requested some funding for training for our office, and it has allowed me to go to the Master Commissioner of the Revenue training that's run by the state. And I, that has been invaluable, and it really has helped a lot with my learning process, but also allowing me to build relationships with other commissioner offices to make sure that we're, you know, implementing best practices. And so just obviously, you want to hear a little bit about the financial impact. So we pulled some numbers, and this is before we implemented the audit program, so pretty much through fiscal year eighteen. And we were up, as you can see, eleven percent in B-Pole revenue over the previous fiscal year, and then also our personal property assessments were over budget. As you can see, five point one-four percent for personal property, and then business personal property was seven point one-six percent over budget. We have a few changes coming up this year. I wanted you all to know so you're not caught off guard when a taxpayer asks you about, why was this, why is this different, but also for the citizens to know what might be coming down the line. We've decided, after I've spoken to a number of commissioner's offices in the state, we are the only office that is still doing the certification process. And just as a reminder, in January or February, you receive a letter in the mail that says, "You own these vehicles, please acknowledge that you own these vehicles," or trailers or whatever, boats, RVs. And that process was created twenty or twenty-five years ago before the DMV was able to provide us with automatic updates. We are now getting those updates every week and making changes to personal property information on a regular basis. It is not a hundred percent perfect, however, the expense of this mailing and the time that it takes to process all of those pieces of mail, I think that relying on that DMV update is really going to allow us some efficiencies in running our office, but also save, save us some money in the operations of our program. We are revamping the business license renewal process a little bit, trying to simplify the renewal forms. We're going to do a separate mailing for contractors that are not in state, and then contractors and all other business, sorry, not in the city. But then all of the contractors and other businesses that are located in the city will receive their personal property statement at the same time, so that it'll be one mailing to the businesses, and they're not getting two separate mailings and confused about when each document is due. We're also working with a number of departments in the city to try and come up with a better way for licensing businesses that are here as a part of an event. And we've done some research with other localities and looking forward to working with city staff in the new year to come up with something that'll be comprehensive, and we can make sure that all of the revenue that's due the city from those special events is coming back to the city. And then we're going to work on our website and try and make it more informative for our citizens and our business owners. We really want to put a focus on, what does it take to start a business? Here are the documents you need to bring when you come to our office, so that we can eliminate business owners having to come back and forth too many times. And then the last piece is educational outreach. We, we had an opportunity to speak to the EDA last month, to their roundtable about this program and what we're doing, particularly with the audit program. And we want to continue to, to go out into the community and to talk to various organizations to let them know how they can report properly to avoid any errors going forward. And so that kind of leads me into why we have a business audit program. When we came and talked to you earlier this year, you all know that Virginia is a self-reporting state, which means the businesses, it is, the burden is on them to report proper information to our office. And without a checks and balance system in place, we're not able to ensure that everybody's being fairly inequitably taxed. So we have hired Kevin O'Brien, our business tax auditor, and together we've worked on a plan to make sure that everything is fair and consistent across the board as we move forward with our audit program. So Kevin was hired and started in July. He was in the Portsmouth Commissioner's Office for seven years as a tax auditor. But the reason I'm really excited about Kevin is he has a number of years of experience as an investigative officer for a number of law firms, and then before that, he was a law enforcement officer. And so he has the training and the comfort to go in and talk with businesses, but he also has the knowledge of all of the different tools that are available to us to ensure that we're getting the best audit and, and providing it in the most fair and easy way, smooth way for the businesses. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council, appreciate the time today. I'm going to go over just a few things about the audit program that I've brought to the city of Williamsburg. I love it here, it's a beautiful city, and I welcome this opportunity. One of the most important things about an audit program is to encourage and foster voluntary compliance by reporting correctly the information that we need to assess you properly. So to that end, we want to educate the public and the business public to report what we need as far as the code is concerned. Individual audits, we consider teaching moments for both us and the business owner. We find out what type of business they have, they find out what kind of requirements they also have to us. So this has been working real well recently. I've been able to contact a number of businesses, most of them out-of-city contractors, to bring them into compliance here in the city of Williamsburg. We actually do three types of audits, the file, the desk, and the site. Without going into too much in the weeds, I will tell you that the file and desk is an analysis of information, basically. We never do an audit like an internal revenue audit, where you're bringing shoeboxes full of records into our office. We're looking at things like your grocery receipts for the year, making sure it's reported properly to us, the same way you report it to either the state or the IRS. And then the site audit is basically for personal property matters. If you're not reporting that properly, we actually need to come out, see what you have that you're using for your business, and educate you as to how to report that equipment properly. There's a number of auditor tools that we use to get the job done, because in the Commissioner of Revenue's office, it's a state office, we have access to all these state records, DMV, the ABC department. ABC is great for when you're auditing a restaurant that has an alcohol license, they have to report to them what they're selling in food, they have to report to us what they're collecting in meals tax. So we have all different types of reports to analyze to determine, are these figures correct? So I won't go through all of them, but we have a lot of resources that we use, depending on what type of audit we're doing. One of the big things is proper reporting. We ask for people to report their gross receipts from their business on an annual basis. They love to go to the bottom part of the internal revenue form and report the adjusted gross income. That's probably the single largest issue we have. And when we locate these problems, we're able to get them to report properly, like we want everybody to report the same figure across the board, from the same line item. Also, we have done a lot of research into a business that has a tax rate based on what they told us they were doing when they obtained their business license. Well, people change their business models through the years, and sometimes what we're charging them as a tax rate may not be what they're actually doing today. So we're going through each and every license to make sure that we have the proper tax rate for each business in the city of Williamsburg. And when you have multiple businesses, you need multiple licenses, that's an oversight on a lot of people's parts. And also, when you have different types of businesses in the same location, sometimes you'd be required to pay a separate tax rate. Tangible personal property is something that we look at very hard, because unfortunately in Virginia, or fortunately in Virginia, it's based on the original installed cost of the equipment. It doesn't get depreciated over time. Most people want to depreciate their equipment, however, statute is clear, it's the original installed cost. Even if you bought the business from somebody else who originally installed that equipment, it's the price that they paid for it and installed it at, not the price you may have paid for it in buying the business. So it's a very important item that we have to look at each and every year at renewal season and reporting season, to make sure, and do comparisons, to make sure the, this property is being reported properly. And to that end, just as a side note, Airbnbs are getting to be big. I know the city council is looking at it to see about regulations for Airbnbs, but the public probably doesn't know that if they start a business venture in their home, and they rent out parts of their home, those parts of their home will then become business personal property, which will be taxed at the thirty percent of the original installed cost, at three and a half percent. So it's something that they should be aware of before entering into an Airbnb agreement. And then, once we've completed an audit or an analysis, we've asked for information from the taxpayer, we'll write them a letter indicating what our findings were recently. I've determined, we have several businesses in the city where their federal ID number that they're reporting to me now does not match what they reported to us when they opened their business. That could be that they opened as a sole proprietor, changed to an LLC, just never gave us that information. So there's a lot of different audit aspects that we're conducting to clean the records up as well, and that's taken some time, but I think we're having a great deal of success. And we have appeal rights that we give to the taxpayers. Everyone has a right to an appeal, the assessment of the commissioner, and there's actually three types of appeals. We just give them that information and let them either appeal it or pay the bill. Just to go over a few figures from when I started, we have licensed eighty-one new businesses. I started on July the sixteenth, I probably started sending out letters asking for information around the end of July. So we've opened eighty-one new businesses, billed eighty-three thousand dollars. Right now, there's more than two hundred businesses currently under review, whether they're professional services or contractors. Most of these licenses and that money came from unlicensed contractors. And we've been through a number of appeals since I started, where they've, five B-Pole licenses, where we've notified them that they owe the city money, and six personal property tax assessments. All of these assessments were upheld by the commissioner's final determination, and payment agreements were made to the city by the taxpayer. And at that, I'll turn it back over to Laura. I'm sure if you have any questions, both of us are happy to answer them.
Well, first, I just want to commend both of you for all of your efforts to kind of modernize and clean up and do the work that you've been doing to get us to this point. It's, it's great to see positive revenue figures there, and I think no business wants to pay them, but I think if, in that, the educational aspect, so that they can do things right, because maybe they weren't doing it incorrectly purposely, that this is, you know, a helpful way about it. So I appreciate those efforts. Bringing in more, more dollars is, is a good thing, and clearly, as you've stated before, you don't make the laws, you just enforce them. So I appreciate that. So continue, continue doing that work, and I wonder what you're going to do next. You don't have to tell me now, but...
Well, again, it's, it's, not only is it our goal to enforce the law, but it's also to make sure that everybody's paying their fair share and that it's an even playing field for all businesses in Williamsburg.
Just one question in terms of personal property. How do you tax leased equipment?
Leased equipment is supposed to be the responsibility of the owner of the equipment. So we ask when we send out our tangible personal property return, if you have any leased equipment, that you notify us of what that equipment is and who the leasor is, then we will send them a bill for the leased equipment. Now, oftentimes, the leasor and the leasing have a, an agreement in their contract as to who's responsible for the taxes. However, the state code says the owner is respons, the owner of the equipment is responsible. So it's up to the two entities in the contract to work that out, but we bill the owner of the equipment.
Good, okay. Well, just as a, before I turn it over, you know, with all the efforts that you've made out there so far, I've, anecdotally, said that there hasn't been any complaints brought to me about the way you, you've approached the business or any business concerned about this activity. So I commend you for, for doing it in a way that, that hasn't been deemed offensive or overly intrusive.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. Like I said, I welcome the opportunity to be here in Williamsburg and hope and do a lot of good things for the city.
I echo the Vice Mayor as well. I just wanted to thank you, Kevin, Laura, and also, to a certain extent, just being able to work excellently with the finance staff, with Barbara. I mean, excellent presentation, excellent job. I appreciate the educational aspect, especially given some of the challenges with the self-reporting state. This, some, a presentation like this today is extremely helpful to all citizens, and that's, that's, I'm grateful for that. It's also nice to see some certainty, despite the Commonwealth's right now, is there's some uncertainty with regard to maybe tax reform that may happen, whether through this General Assembly session or the next few General Assembly sessions. So thank you for, you know, doing your due diligence amidst of this, you know, kind of uncertain direction that the state may take with regards to certain taxes and stuff like that. Like Vice Mayor Pons said, you're here to enforce the law, and I think y'all are doing a really good job with that. Really quick question, in terms with the third appeal process, is that fall under the city attorney, or is that the Commonwealth's attorney that's going to take up the case to the circuit court? Because I saw that the tax commissioner makes that determination at the second appeal prong.
Correct, and the taxpayer could actually appeal to the circuit court and tax commissioner simultaneously.
Okay. We, hopefully, will never get to that point, but...
I'm not sure why, but, and normally, in other localities, it's the city attorney or a private attorney hired by the city to represent the commissioner in that assessment.
Well, thank you.
Laura and Kevin, I would just like to say thank you also. I think for me, one of the sort of eye-opening aspects is the number of taxes that are involved and under your purview. There's a lot more things than what individuals would normally think of. And I think the education aspect of it is also very well received. I know you've been to a couple of the different organizations and clubs in town, too. I only have one question, and that relates to the tangible personal property, and you mentioned specifically Airbnb. So if someone did rent out their home, and they were to pay the tax on the furnishings, and they don't still have receipts, how do you come up with an estimate for a number? Because there are some of us who don't keep receipts for, you know, twenty years and things like that.
So we ask you to make a best guess estimate, and you can also do, look at comparables out there on the internet and provide that as documentation. You have to do a little bit of research. We have the right to come in and say, well, that's undervalued or overvalued or whatever. The assessment is thirty percent of the, of the cost, so there is a little bit of flexibility for the homeowner and for the commissioner to make a determination on reasonable value of personal property.
Thank you.
Thanks for the presentation. I think the presentation before the previous council about establishing the position back in April, there was talk about the position would actually be paying for itself. So which month in the year does that actually happen?
So that has happened. I think when you include the benefits and everything with the salary, we're right, right about there, so very close if, if we haven't already paid for it.
Thank you.
Is that it? Yeah. Mr. O'Brien, Ms. Overe, thank you also for your efforts daily and for your presentation today. I just have one question, going back to concept that if a resident were to rent a room in their home through one of the variety of short-term rental websites, they would then be liable for personal property tax? And if people have access to the entire home, then the entire home's furnishings are subject to this tax?
Everything on that property.
Is this a conversation that's happening statewide at Commissioner of Revenue level? And, and are all localities approaching this in the same manner?
It is a statewide conversation, and there is no room for interpretation, because the state law lays it out very clearly, that if, so for example, if you have a home business, if you maybe do taxes in your home, and you use a portion of your home to conduct that work, all of the property in that area where you conduct that work is also taxable under business personal property. And so the way the state law currently reads, any, any part of a home that is used for personal, for business is taxable. And, and unless the General Assembly decides to write language specifically for home rental businesses, then we have to use the code that is in place for business, business personal property. And you know this as well, am I, anything you want to add to that?
Just one thing.
If you could come to the microphone.
That's what Laura says is absolutely correct, as far as operating a business on an Airbnb platform-type setting. That does not apply to an individual who may be renting a room in their house to a college student for a semester or two. The statute is clear that it has to be, the rentals less than thirty days.
Right, the difference between long-term and short-term.
Right.
But I, I don't think most people would expect that they would have a tax liability on all of their personal property that is taxed in no other way when they lease out their home. So I, I hope this is something that the state will look at, because you would have to, you'd have to rent your house out a lot to make that work.
Well, and, and some localities that have chosen to license Airbnb, individuals that want to have an Airbnb or similar business, the business owner was not made aware of this PPT requirement, this personal property tax payment requirement, and in many cases, it has caused a lot of problems for homeowners that weren't prepared financially to, you know, take on that burden. So it's something to be very carefully considered as we look at how that's going to be legislated going forward, and, and also for the, the state government to make some decisions on how they want to manage that as well.
And so for the individual who happens to drive for one of the Uber, Lyft, or one of, one of the other internet economy ride services, is their vehicle likewise thirty percent of the original cost of the vehicle, no depreciation at three and a half percent?
Not only that, sir, but it's, also loses its PPT RA, ran it to them through the state of Virginia, because it's now a business-use vehicle. They lose that fifty-four percent tax relief from the city, and they pay the whole thing on the thirty percent of the original cost plus three and a half percent.
Yeah, I don't know how we do it, but the more we could make people aware of that in advance, because for somebody who's just doing this on a, every once in a while basis, that could, they could dig themselves a bigger hole, and they can revenue their way out.
That's why when designing the PowerPoint, I put that in as a, a note in bold, because I think it is really important for the citizens to be aware, that that, that's an implication that they probably haven't considered.
Great. Any other questions? Once again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This takes us to our next background presentation. This takes us to our next background presentation discussion, and this one's a discussion, on live broadcast options for city meetings. Mr. Barham?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor Frowley, members of City Council. In an effort to increase transparency, Councilman Zhang requested that staff look at live or recorded broadcast options that are not currently being recorded or broadcasted. Examples of these meetings would be ARB, BZA, and other boards and commissions. Current staffing levels in IT will not allow for any more after-hours recordings of meetings. To mitigate this, IT staff has made several changes to allow the option for other boards and commissions to record or broadcast their meetings. In city council chambers, we've modified the control systems to allow for one-touch recording of any meeting. What that means is is the touch panel on the clerk's desk, you can go over there, it has a button, you can start recording. Once you press that record button, the audio systems come on automatically, the microphones come on automatically, and that center camera will zoom in and frame up the dais, and it starts recording. When you're done, press the button, it stops, and now you've got a recording of the meeting. We've also purpose-built a unit that can be easily operated by non-technical staff that allows for broadcast to Facebook Live. And what we're doing here is we've got a standard video camera on a tripod with a webcaster attached to it. All it needs is an Internet connection. You get on the Internet, you set the camera up, you're on the Internet, you press a button on the webcaster, it takes you directly to Facebook Live. When you're done, you press the button again, and the meeting will then end. So these are the changes we made to the process of recording meetings while trying to hopefully minimize the workload on on the IT staff. So I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you may have, and I welcome the discussion amongst City Council to provide staff with any further direction that you might have.
So I'll defer to Councilman Zhang if he wanted to to kind of kick the ball.
Let's start with questions for Mr. Barham. Anything?
No questions.
Mr. Zhang, questions?
Yeah. Thanks again for your presentation. In terms of what I from what I understand, these past few months, IT staff, as you had mentioned just now, had kind toyed around with some experimentations of how to do this without having to need live bodies there to monitor process. What how has it been? What are some of the observations you can share with how they've worked? Have they been really effective?
It's been effective. We've had to make a couple of tweaks specifically to this one-touch recording in chambers to get the volume level up to where we want and to further refine that camera focus on where we want it to be focused. But overall, it's been successful. I know the chamber has used it on several occasions and have reported no issues to us.
And in terms of being able to use the technology just fine, it didn't create any obstacles. It wasn't challenging to have to use that.
It's simply a matter of pressing a button saying start recording and press a button to say stop recording.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. So in reference to the button, does that mean that anyone can just go and and touch the button? Or does it have to be for a pre-scheduled meeting that you all are aware of? Or how does that?
We would hope it would be for a pre-scheduled meeting that we were all aware of. But given that it's simply recording, it doesn't when you press the button, it doesn't automatically push us live to whether it be to Channel 48 or to Facebook or anything like that. It would simply be a recording. So yeah, it's not a it's not an issue for us. We would certainly hope to be aware of it so that we can kind of be somewhat involved and help if there's any issues with it.
And then once the recording is done, I guess it goes into the IT.
It goes to us. It's loaded up in there. We trim the front and the back, take off any, you know, the the part of the meeting before the gavel is hit if they were using the gavel. We trim it up on the front and the back and then push it out to Granicus so that you can watch it on the website.
And so we would be able to watch it on the Granicus website, but then individuals and the public would be able to watch it on the regular city website under an.
Yes, ma'am.
E meeting.
Under e-meetings.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, you'll be looking at biometrics for that button. But what the next version of this, could it be the camera actually responding to which mic is being spoken into?
It could be. You're getting into when we in terms of focus on on who's actually speaking, we've looked at that. It's quite expensive to do some systems like that. I think we had talked about in conference rooms and such, putting in systems like that to allow to allow for easily recording of that and then having the cameras and the audio systems that could then focus. But that point of entry is fairly expensive right now.
Thank you.
This currently would work in the council chamber only.
It would work for the one-touch recording would work in council chambers. The Facebook Live piece could work in any location provided we had Internet access.
And if an individual does not have a Facebook account, can they watch it on Facebook Live?
I'm going to say I don't I don't necessarily know the complete answer to that, but I'm going to say no, because you couldn't log into Facebook.
Right.
Without.
That's a concern to me because there are a lot of people who, out of principle, for multiple reasons, do not want a Facebook account. So as Ms. Ramsey said, it's recorded, but not immediately broadcast. And we would or would not have intention at some point of looking to rebroadcast these on public access television.
We would not have intention.
So we'd solely be on demand on the website.
On demand on the website.
And the way the Architectural Review Board meetings are set up, it's much more, well, not every time, but many of the meetings are much more of a conversation than they are a more formal structure like this. There's a lot of give and take, discussion with the applicants, discussion with the architects. Do you see this working in that environment where you have basically it's multiple people sitting around the table, unless something's changed in the last several years? How do we handle that? I mean, it would change the whole feel of that meeting.
Sure. And and I think a lot of that, too, is and correct me if I'm wrong, Carolyn, but but you've got plans spread out on tables and stuff. And there's, there's no easy way to accommodate and get shots of of those types.
Visuals.
The visuals of that easily.
So perhaps it would be something for each board and commission to consider whether it would make sense for them to utilize it also.
I think that's a decision that should probably reside with this body. I do we just need to talk about that. Okay. So now, thank you for if you can stay right there because we may have questions as we go along. Mr. Zhang, you want to kick us off?
Yeah, no. Thanks again for the presentation and with the with the questions, answers. I think this the genesis of this came right around when I Barbara and I got elected together. We had discussions. And this has come right before even Barbara and our elections and Paul's reelection. There were some folks, citizens who had expressed interest in participating somehow or getting involved somehow with the events of how some of the meetings were going, but couldn't make those meetings. For example, one of them, I remember, said I couldn't make the afternoon meetings for the Economic Development Authority meetings, which is fine, given how the meetings I know that it sparked a lot of overlapping conversations about board meeting times, including this body, finding ways to maximize board attendance. But I think given to what Drew and our conversation had been, perhaps the nature of city council meetings have is changing some aspects. You have the advent of technology like Facebook, Granicus, Access Online to view these live streaming meetings. And for me, I think this opportunity comes to fill that gap where we can have people continue to get involved and participate with some of the most important city decisions that we're making. You know, with the EDA, for example, we're doing downtown vibrancy efforts. I think some people want to be able to have some skin and game by being involved or at least being able to follow along and not just have to read minutes. And I actually give credit to you, Drew. Up to a certain point, EDA meetings were not minutes, were not even being released with agendas, were not being released out for public notice, or at least in an accessible way. So I think with this, this will be a way to usher the city into greater transparency. I agree with Barb. Perhaps we should take a more methodical way, ask the boards within their own right and their staff persons to have a discussion about this, then have the staff members come back to City Council at a certain date with a recommendation. It doesn't have to be all decided. And I didn't think you were going to say that we had to make a decision today, but I.
Oh, and I'm not saying that. I think ultimately, we should.
Ultimately, we should do it in a more methodical way. In terms of the motion sensors, I think it's timely that we have that discussion now because of how the budget's going to be constructed for IT later on. But I'm more of I think this is the right step in the direction with the one-button sensors. I do hear you on the Facebook Live issue with that. I think also with the advent of the city councils being broadcasted on Facebook Live, that we've seen an increase in viewership as well. But obviously, accessibility to certain folks that don't have Facebook will be a problem. But I think that shouldn't discourage us from pursuing such an option to begin with and continue tinkering with technologies as the IT staff has so aptly and creatively done or innovative innovatively have done to advance transparency efforts. So I'll just leave my comments at that.
Well, and so I think, you know, it's been a goal of this this body, city and staff to be very transparent and ensure that residents that want to participate have the opportunity to do that. And so, you know, I would be in favor of having kind of that database available on website so that folks can watch it, whether it's Facebook or Internet access. I mean, there are some people you're just not going to be able to communicate with because they don't have computers or so. And maybe they don't care. Who knows? The, you know, so I've served on ARB, lots of boards and commissions. And, you know, just the only other one that I can see that that may have some merit is the EDA. And, you know, if there's an item that has to have some closed session format to it, then, you know, the button, it goes off. And so we're not talking about disseminating information that that's proprietary in any way. And so for that matter, having that technology available and having those meetings recorded, I think, would would go a long way. I don't know how I feel about ARB to the mayor's point. I mean, that's, that's kind of a fluid meeting where there's, you know, an exchange back and forth. And, you know, and if you're just a homeowner looking for the expansion of a back porch, that may not be something that that needs to be publicly televised or available. And so I think there's, there's some privacy there. All of these meetings are advertised, they're all public. And if, you know, going back to, you know, the example of the ARB, if the neighbors, they get notified of the meeting so they could they could participate. And they're always at 6:30 or 6 o'clock, 6:30. So they're in the evenings, and they have that opportunity to participate. Something like soil and water, I don't know if they ever have met, but I don't know that anybody wants to watch that. So, you know, I would support some effort to making these meetings more readily available online.
I concur. I think that as technology changes and progresses, that we need to keep up with what's what's out there and stay relevant to to the citizenry. And so this allows us that opportunity. So thank you.
I agree. It was very helpful. And I didn't realize this was one of your tests. I was sitting in a planning commission work session and then had to leave to go to a nonprofit event at the community building and was able to go back and look at the rest of the meeting. And that was very helpful. Also, in terms of Benny's point, watching some of the meetings live, I remember during the budget season that one of our residents was watching it at home live, and he got so engaged in the process that he he ran over to be part of the meeting and to contribute. So that's a good indication there. Thank you.
So I appreciate your idea of getting input from each board and commission. So we're looking at EDA and ARB and which other BZA? Which is there?
That's one more.
I think those are the I think those are the big three, if you will. I think the planning commission has already taken the step of starting to use the one button for their work sessions, which previously were not televised or recorded even. So I think the planning commission is already on the right track. But I do think those three are worthy of conversation. One of the things that Mark and I wanted to try and extract from the conversation today is how far you want us to take. The conversation that has been had at the dais today, particularly about ARB, and your comments, Mayor, about expectations of what kind of quality you're going to get. Obviously, you're not going to get the quality that we have of a meeting like today where we've got two people in the control room, making sure the camera's where it needs to be and the volumes of the recording are where they should be. But with investment through technology, we can improve on what we've got and try to give people an even better experience watching at home. But I think that it's going to come down to what's more cost effective, adding a staff person who can run those meetings and be here for those things, a video technician specifically, or investing in the technology to allow us to do it kind of autonomously. And so what we wanted to know is if those groups that are meeting, say, in these two meeting rooms here at Stryker or in another meeting room in the city, want to do televised meetings or recorded meetings, are we outfitting those rooms? Or are we asking them to relocate to council chambers? That's the kind of conversation that they need to have so that we can come back to you as part of the budget with our recommendation on how to meet the need, if that makes any sense.
Yes. I do think we need input from if we're specifically talking about BZA, EDA, and ARB, I think we need input from those groups about what this does to help or hinder their meeting process. The other issue I don't know that we have an answer for is the whole Facebook question. There are a lot of people with privacy concerns. There are people with concerns about the ethics of the company, the different and people would say, well, what about Cox? You put your, you know, your television on Cox. Cox has a franchise in this community. Facebook does not. So it's, we're just choosing one social media platform. And I would, I think we just need more exploration into what the options are and something to consider.
And I would say, just to root it, it's not necessarily a random conversation we're having. It's just as a reminder, it's coming from a GIO. So in terms of a GIO's initiative that we just adopted, and it's been in in the GIO's document for a while. But in terms of the costs, you had mentioned that there are some high costs that may come to it. You know, if there are some ways we can pull some numbers and have a future board discussion about it, I mean, I'm all for moving the direction of very methodical and to your point, yeah.
It seems like we're all generally supportive of the concept. Do you have enough to go on?
I think so. I mean.
You can always watch the film later and figure out.
Exactly. The the mobile streaming is still pretty cumbersome. And I think it makes us a little nervous to think that a board or commission like the ARB would have the responsibility of setting that up and using it. So what this does is it tells us to continue to explore the technology that's out there to make this autonomous and then compare that against what it might cost to staff the resources.
It's much better than trying to livestream council retreats with a banana holding your iPad. So speaking from personal experience, everything's been much better at this point.
You've had many firsts on this city council. Okay, is that it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barham.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is release of funds to the EDA for the fiscal year 19 Downtown Vibrancy implementation of lighting on Prince George Street. Mr. Steely.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Welcome.
Michelle, do I have a button to push? I have a clicker. All right. Oh, look at that. So we were revisiting the meeting presentation we made back in late October about part of our downtown vibrancy program involving the proposal to install string lighting downtown. There was some concern from council members about both both the aesthetics and the impact that might have in downtown. If we tried that either as a test pilot or as a year-round thing, we heard those comments. Also, at that meeting, you approved generously some funding for special events that I'm going to get to in a minute that might weigh in a little bit on this issue. Since that meeting, we went back in our EDA meetings and talked about a couple of things. We got proposals back from contractors about installing string lighting. And because of the lack of existing infrastructure providing enough electricity in enough places for those trees, the pricing for the string lighting we were looking at became prohibitively expensive and sort of eliminated itself out of hand. So we put that to the side. We then looked at lighting individual trees in the same two-block area as we have here. I'll show you the two blocks of Prince George Street. We looked at lighting all of the existing trees, both William and Mary private property on some of the left-hand side and city property on the right-hand side as you travel towards the delis. Again, the lack of infrastructure meant that we were not able to justify coming to you with a proposal to light those trees. We did look at battery-operated options, and Michelle's office got a number of quotes in from people. It was very exciting and intriguing until you realized that each tree would need a dozen or so different strings, each battery-operated, they can't be done sequentially. So that means each string would have to have the batteries changed, and they'd be up in a ladder changing. Didn't work. So we moved on to looking at. we moved on to looking at other options. As part of that effort concurrently, Michelle also was able to meet with Sam Jones at the College of William &amp; Mary and get approval for, you see that beautiful green dot there, where there's a very large tree at the corner of Prince George and Boundary. And we thought as a signature piece, if we have lighting coming on both blocks, to have that tree lit up with their permission would be a great sort of statement piece. We did, she was able to get their permission to do that. And that brings us to today. We are requesting $15,000 for holiday lighting in our downtown test area. That plan's going to retain, retain the lighting of the tree at the corner there, which would stay up until March. That's the tree in question, the center of the screen. The proposals we have say that lighting the tree in sort of the center fashion or any of these three fashions will probably run $6,500 of that $15,000. The remaining lighting we would like to do would be temporary in nature also and would involve installing individual evergreen trees down the streets using the existing flowerpots that the city owns. We would have city staff purchase the trees, string the lights, and the remaining budget, $7,400 or so, would cover not only offsetting the labor of city staff involved in that effort, but also the purchase of the trees. Those trees would then, at the conclusion of the test run, be converted to permanent plantings wherever the city groundskeeping staff felt they would be most useful so that that investment is not one that's a lost to us. We have 14 of those pots. So the idea is we can very successfully cover those two blocks. We thought it was a great opportunity to have these on, on those two blocks with the centerpiece of the large tree lit in the meantime and see, just see what kind of impact it has. It is not as dramatic as we wanted with the entire grown trees being lit up or with string lights. But we felt it was an accommodation we could get done with your approval at Thursday's meeting. We could have this installed probably next week. And the large tree could be lit up by Christmas if we get your approval. Finally, the, one thing to ask you to do if you are in town for New Year's Eve, part of our special events budget was used to promote or to help with the funding for PG 500, which is the second year of a New Year's Eve celebration in the 500 block of Prince George Street, involving a collaborative effort of those businesses to put on an event. And we're working with Culture Fix there to make sure that they have string lighting in that street for that event outside of their heated tent area. So we'd have a chance to see what that looks like, because I know there were some questions from council about how that might look. We're also going to be supporting a New Year's Eve celebration that is not a ticketed event but free and open to the public on Duke of Gloucester Street in the Colling Williamsburg Sparkle Land area by helping to provide live music and, again, outdoor heaters and string lighting in that venue as well. So we thought it did a couple of things. It brought that downtown vibrancy for a big night like New Year's Eve. It also gives us a chance to see what string lighting on poles does so that members of council can see it. We can take pictures and show the public and revisit this at a time and place that makes sense in the future. Happy to take any questions on any of that.
Thank you, Mr. Steely. I appreciate you guys taking another look at this and coming back with a, with a proposal with some more detailed information. I think what you come back with is pretty good. I guess the only question I have is the corner where the Triangle Building is, any reason why we wouldn't put another planner there?
Absolutely. I apologize. It's not entirely anything. Get back here. We actually, in our original proposal, we're going to go halfway down the block there to the, to include the Triangle Building. And we have, with 14 planners, that will easily extend to include that space.
Yeah, I'd like to see if we go forward with this, that we include.
We had flowerpots there originally. We can easily distribute them to include that.
Thank you for your presentation. And thank you for being here, Mr. Chairman. Before I get into the, the tree lighting concept with it, I'm going to carry us back to, you know, the, where the decision was being had or the discussion with moving forward with this idea as part of utilizing these funds. So can you recap just for us and the public? You know, what, what part of, or how did lighting become an aspect of downtown vibrancy? Some residents, I know there have been some mixed feelings, so this will be an opportunity to.
Absolutely. Happy to do it. It addresses a couple, it comes from a couple of different angles. One was an expression of concern from multiple residents who were surveyed as part of our downtown vibrancy study and the parking study, that they found walking around downtown a little challenging because the overall level of ambient lighting was not sufficient to make them feel safe. That got us thinking, what could we do to enhance lighting that wouldn't simply be more streetlights, but might be something that's more appealing and draw more energy to downtown? One of the specific points they made in the downtown vibrancy study was the successful downtown areas trying to urge economic vitality had found that lighting did that successfully. So we were trying to find a year-round solution to let people know that they have arrived in a commercial center of downtown as opposed to a residential area so that they might be able, wherever they're parking or walking from, they would find an easy sense of destination, having arrived at the area where this lighting's installed.
Gotcha. And in terms of, with the current plan for Thursday's vote, you had mentioned that hopefully you'll be able to gather some sort of data to see how people will react to the installation. So how do you plan, how does the EDA?
Don't have any plans on putting that out to the public yet. I'd like to get, we have our meeting coming up as well.
Okay, gotcha.
To, to look for public input. I'd certainly like to encourage members of council and city staff to come down and look at whatever we can get implemented, whatever you approve, and to come down New Year's Eve and examine those things, both to help celebrate New Year's Eve, but also as a very real way to get personal firsthand information about what this does and how it impacted your impression of downtown.
Right, right. Absolutely. And thank you. And Ms. Carolyn, for, something that struck to me, and I think I may have asked this before, is there any planning aspect to having these temporary installments? I mean, do we have, does one have to consider how this potential installation, for example, harmonizes with the surrounding area because it's in the downtown area or?
If it's on the city right-of-way, it's not a planning issue. It's a.
Is this ultimately what we?
Right. And it's a temporary event. So it would be something, even if it was under a planning issue, if it was a temporary three-days-or-less event, we, we have some flexibility in that.
But then to the first aspect of your explanation, and this is moot point, but if we had something that was more permanent, that would not have to go through any other?
Wouldn't have, wouldn't have to go through the architectural review board if it's on city right-of-way, city property.
Right.
It would have to go to architectural review board if it's on private property, because that's when architectural review board kicks in.
Gotcha. I thought that. Thank you for that distinction there. And I've no other further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam, for the presentation. And you mentioned the event on Dog Street for New Year's Eve.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this just going to be that night or?
It is that night. They were, they're erecting a large heated tent. They'll have bands performing throughout the evening. It's a cooperative effort between four or five of the businesses in that area. They've pooled their resources and we, and the EDA has dedicated some of the special event funding that you presented to help them with that infrastructure, primarily to make sure that they're engaging with lights and outdoor scenery so that passersby downtown can see that there are events happening and it won't be only there for the entertainment of people who've purchased tickets.
So the, the string lights that will be erected will be all the way down to Henry Street or just?
I think, no, that they're going to be, I think they erect their, they close that 500 block. The tent is set up closer to Armstead, and the lights will be coming down closer to Boundary.
Okay. But then you also said.
You're talking about two different events here.
Yes.
You've got the Prince George 500 event and the Duke of Gloucester event.
Correct.
Right. And I was asking about the Duke of Gloucester.
Oh, sorry.
Because I had not heard about that prior to tonight, today.
That's only going to be out, directly outside of that space, which is closer to the confusion corner end of the block and not extending to Henry Street.
Okay. And there will be some string lights erected on poles?
Correct.
Okay.
Temporary removable poles. It'll be up just for the evening.
Okay. So people will get the opportunity to see what it would, would look like there. And speaking of string lights on poles, we were talking this morning that that seems to be something that you see now in a lot of different areas, whether it be different cities and different parking lots and, and restaurant areas and breweries and things like that. So personally, I think it's nice that we're looking sort of outside of that to something a little bit more unique to Williamsburg with the, with the trees and, and also utilizing the flowerpots and the locations we also have. I think it would also be important to, to try to see sort of what's the next trend, you know, how are, how's lighting moving, you know, because there's always the next, next thing. So other than string lights or lights in trees, what might be other opportunities for us to, to make it a little bit more unique, unique to Williamsburg? And, and I assume that once this is done, then we'll have a better pulse on extending it for a longer time period and also further down the street as well.
I think that I could maybe address that in two different ways. When this opportunity was presented or this proposal came in front of me, I thought it was a really great use of existing resources in the city for the holiday season, to have those small evergreen trees in those pots, I thought was a great tie-in that we should maybe consider doing every holiday season because we use, we put those pots away in November, and we ought to be just simply repurposing them in November and commencing directly into a holiday decoration theme. So I think that's a great use of existing resources. But I think in terms of your first point, the EDA is already considering, let's talk to lighting contractors out there and talk about what we, if lighting is the goal, both from the downtown vibrancy angle and from the safety and security angle, do we look at some interesting and creative dramatic uplighting of buildings? Do we look at any, any kind of installation? No one on the EDA is presenting themselves as a lighting expert. So we're going to look to experts to bring us some good data so we can come back to you with what we think is a well-vetted proposition and, and see what city council thinks about at that point.
Good. Thank you.
Well, thanks. Several questions. In terms of priorities, what priority do you give this in relationship to wayfinding? Because we hear a lot of concern about not having proper wayfinding. And we're talking about lighting, but I'm not hearing anybody giving a priority to wayfinding.
We didn't directly talk about this as wayfinding as much as we did about placemaking. So I think that they're related, but I think they are clearly different. And the EDA, I think that the wayfinding was a big part of the downtown vibrancy study, and we think it's crucial. The EDA would be happy to participate in such an event. I don't think we'd be the right ones to lead that. But if there's a role for us to participate or offer insight or opinions, we are happy to do it, work with city staff and the planning folks. You know, it's not something we have dug into or assigned as one of our key priorities. It seemed to be that there were folks with better training and experience in that area than us.
And then in terms of the plot, the pots with the trees, how tall are these trees?
We haven't got those specked out unless Michelle has that. We are talking, the flowerpots themselves are 30, 32, 34 inches. The trees, probably no more than 60, 70 inches. I don't know what they were.
Correct. And there is a sample tree. When you leave today, you can, if you go down Boundary Street, right at the Hounstail Barkery at the corner there, across from Tervis, Will Fiddler has put a, a sample tree in one of the pots.
And how much, so when we, that's what I was going to ask for you. It was good, they have the stability, you know, they're going to withstand the storms like we had last night?
I think it did withstand. It's been installed since last week.
Oh, that's great.
So it survived.
What about in terms of what it's doing to the space, the circulation space on the sidewalk, you know, in the most congested areas, how much space will be left?
Well, they've been in place for five years now. These flowerpots have been in the same places. So I don't think we have a problem with traffic flow. I think that you'll, though your point's well taken. I think we've, we've got demonstrated traffic patterns there for a long time on the, from the retailer's point of view. I think the retailers by and large find them a great asset and a street enhancement to people lingering and wandering down the street. It definitely, I think there is an ongoing conversation with Public Works and the, and the EDA urging for the investment and purchase of more benches and more flowerpots and things of that nature. But I think this plays right into that scenario.
Thank you.
Mr. Steely, you said that the cost to light the signature tree at Prince George and Boundary would be about $6,500?
Right. The labor, the estimate that we have is that $2,500 of that would be labor for city staff and $4,000 would be broken down between the small lights wrapping the trunk and main branches and the pendant lights that would be hanging in the tree.
And that larger amount then would be recaptured if we decided to do this again in subsequent years. We would not have to reinvest that money unless it was replacement cause.
Correct.
So it would simply be an ongoing $2,500.
And it is arguable, not having put these away for the season, it is arguable the same is true for the lights in the smaller trees. If city staff is able to remove them in such a way that they can bag them up and or stow them successfully for next year, it's just new D batteries and put them back out on the street next year.
Okay. That's very helpful to know. Just a little bit more about the event on the Duke of Gloucester, because your mention of it is the first I've heard. Is, and I'm only asking this question in the context of the absence of First Night. Is this a family-friendly event?
It is. Yeah. So the proposal came from the folks who are running the Sparkle Land Area Lounge on Duke of Gloucester Street. It was open to the public, the idea being creating a family space throughout the holidays. Santa has been there four days a week to have your picture taken with Santa, that kind of thing. There's fantastic hot chocolate and small cupcakes and coffee to be.
I can't imagine.
That's another story. But, but the, the idea has been that the, they would take advantage of the vacant space on Duke of Gloucester Street and the store they have. And that after Christmas Eve, that entertainment specifically is not appropriate. So that they might keep the same space open, but with the departure of Santa, we might do some other sort of entertainment, have continued both adult beverages available for relaxation, but also hot chocolate and stuff for the kids. And, and then have an engagement for New Year's Eve. There's a blues concert earlier in the evening at Kimball. The idea being when folks get out of that concert, it would be early in the evening. This would be just kicking off at 8:30 or 9 o'clock. There would be live music there and it would be a way to engage. There's no cost. People can come hang out and do a New Year's Eve celebration that isn't a ticketed event or an alcohol-focused event.
So entrance would be free, but any consumables would be?
Correct. There'd be food and beverage to purchase, but that you could come hang out there. The heaters outside, the band would be heard outside as well. So you could hang out inside, outside, weather depending.
And help me with my recollection, it seems there was some string lighting adjacent to the Blue Talon around the weekend of Thanksgiving?
Right. There was a, a single string of lights that we put up on Wednesday night for our packet pickup because that alley's not particularly well-lit and we were signing up people until 7 o'clock at night. And then the folks that brought the lights didn't come pick them up until Saturday. So it was there two days.
Well, I, I can appreciate that, that your proposal here may not be, as you put it, so dramatic as what you would hope for, but sometimes a little less drama can be a good thing. Any feedback, questions?
No, I think it's a good idea.
Do we, do we need to take some action?
Not today. I think the action would be taken on Thursday if you wanted to appropriate the funding or direct me to appropriate the funding. I think that it does, it's probably important to mention that both of the special events that Mr. Steely has mentioned, neither one of them has an approved special event permit yet.
That's an important point.
Yeah. One, one other thing I would mention is, you know, this is just one person speaking, but my contemplation when we were going through this budget process last year with visioning this $150,000 would, would incorporate some sort of wayfinding aspect to it, to what council member Maslin had spoken to. But I don't know what we would have to do to get to that point. But, you know, for whatever it's worth, I think a lot of credit could also be given to the EDA members for putting such bold, you know, ideas out there. And I'm appreciative that we're even able to get to this point to have these discussions as well. So a little bit different than how I envisioned, but that doesn't matter. What we have to discuss is what's in front of us. And I think there's been some good conversation today. Thanks.
Well, and just to, to follow up on what Mr. Sang and Mr. Maslin said, there was conversation during the EDA meetings regarding the downtown vibrancy about wayfinding and signage. And, and I think it was determined that there were a lot of things unknown at this time.
Sure.
For instance, any types of conversion or activity nodes or emphasis on certain areas. So I thought it was, felt that that would be putting sort of the cart before the horse if we looked at signage before we knew exactly what we were signing for.
Correct. The, the funding that we, we have been talking about was all tentatively approved by city council with the idea that this was a nine-month implementation program to be completed before July. It, it struck us as putting the cart before the horse if we were to propose wayfinding signage when we don't yet have all of the answers about the larger pictures of downtown vibrancy that I think will fall more to this body than to the EDA, particularly about activity nodes, free parking. activity nodes, free parking, paid parking. There's just, there was a lot of, a lot of balls still in the air and we thought that for us to weigh in without any particular expertise in the field might be ill-advised.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Steely.
Thank you.
This takes us to our fourth background presentation discussion, which is Presentation Concerning the Benefits and Current Activities of the Williamsburg Area Arts Commission. Susan Branch Smith, Chair, W A A C. Welcome, Ms. Smith.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, thanks for giving us a few minutes this evening. I do have a little presentation. I'm going to see if it works. There we go. I wanted to introduce our present members of the council, Robin Phillips, could raise your hand, Charles Nurnberger, Barbara Volmer, Nick Vretos, Pat Rubline, and Lisa Byham is our city liaison, helping us tremendously so. So you hear a lot these days about how the arts are good for our local economy because they bring tourism and dollars to local businesses. What I'd like to have you consider for a minute is just one more benefit, that the arts are a sign of good community health. For instance, people are more likely to do business or move to a town that has a lively arts community, not for the obvious reason, which is that we like to watch or participate or go to theater, movies, museums, but for the reason that arts in the community bring people together, especially in a small town, which depends on a lot of volunteering, excuse me, I'm dry throat, to make arts happen. Studies show that when people participate in the arts, that is in planning, performing, building sets, organizing workshops, it increases our sense of belonging to a community, something that's referred to as social capital. In one town around the year 2000, a small group of artists was awarded, thank you so A small group of artists was awarded a grant to beautify a blighted community center. They did so by bringing together other artists and together they learned to interact and build relationships with the local municipal government, learned organizing skills, and gained the knowledge that they could accomplish other goals. In other words, one small process created a future of projects and possibilities. So I agree that the arts increases our social capital and our opportunities for self-expression. The arts give people in a community a way to improve their skills, creative abilities, and other talents, which improves self-esteem and in general happiness. The arts give us ways to spend time with people we might not ordinarily know, increasing our tolerance and understanding of others. For children, participation in the arts is especially helpful because it improves their school performance and reduces delinquency. As the arts grow in a community, their longevity helps ensure that all of these groups, or all of these effects multiply. And as the positive effects multiply, oops, sorry. And as the positive effects multiply, people who've been involved with the arts feel an increased sense of pride in their own town and, in other words, they've become more civically engaged. So over the past fifty years or so, we've seen the arts grow dramatically in Williamsburg to the point where they're used to meet grade-specific standards of learning, for instance. The Virginia Symphony, for instance, doesn't just come to our schools to perform, they come to teach, for instance, the science of music. Virginia Opera similarly performs operas based on well-known children's stories as children are learning to read fairy tales on their own. We have, in our town now, we have our own, our own, excuse me, our own opera and our own symphony. We have several museums, not to mention annual shows such as Occasion for the Arts. We have an annual film festival. We have several choral groups. We have a writers' group. We have two, we can support two theater companies in our town. We now fund thirty-two organizations, some of whom are receiving less than they used to receive in nineteen ninety-one, when I believe the commission was founded, because there are more, every year there are more and more deserving groups to help. So thanks to the generosity of City Council and the Board of Supervisors, we've been able to, since 2016, to give raises, as it were, to some of these groups who want to grow their organizations. For instance, they want to, excuse me, vary their programming, bring in different speakers, license better music and so forth. Last year, we had requests for two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars and were able to grant one-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand. One-hundred-and-fifty-thousand of that is provided by equal contributions from City Council and the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors has indicated that they would like to increase their funding for the local arts grants. We don't know the exact, exact amount they have in mind, but we'll let you know in the event that you'd like to contribute additional funds in the future. We realize that you already provide administrative support for us in the form of Lisa Byham and other services and we're most grateful for that. We're making a similar presentation to the Board of Supervisors tomorrow night and we'll get back to you as soon as we learn more about their intentions. Again, the arts commissioners and our town, thank you for your support of the arts and making our town healthier and happier because of the arts. Questions?
Ms. Smith, thank you for bringing the presentation to us. It's always good to, to get an update of kind of what's happening and, and with your committee particularly. And seeing all these things does give me a little sense of pride that we're able to, you know, however small amount with the council and the city residents are able to participate to help support these activities with their dollars. And I would confirm that all of what you said is true. Maybe I needed a little bit more arts and culture in my life when I was growing up, but thank you for taking the time to come out today.
Appreciate Ms. Smith for your presentation today and for members of the commission sitting in at the City Council work session. You know, I, I always think when, when I hear the Williamsburg Arts Commission, you know, during our budget season, the matrix that y'all give in terms of recommended funding is extremely, extremely helpful and very professionally done, so well done on that. I think that also speaks to the brand and, and the trust, I think, with hopefully that's shared with the other governing locality bodies that y'all do and, you know, split these funds and determine these fund allocations in a very, very good, detailed, you know, thoughtful way. And we certainly appreciate that. So thank you for all you've done, for your advocacy efforts. My only one question is, I, I didn't know if the commission had gotten involved with some of the 2019 commemoration efforts that's happening statewide. I know there've been some public art aspects to it. From what I understand, they're celebrating the women coming here into, to the colonies with the Women's Monument over at Richmond. I know there are some statutes unveiled of some prominent women leaders that deserve all that praise and also celebrating and acknowledging the, the legacy of the first African slaves that came to this country. So I didn't know, did the commission get involved in any aspect with?
Well, we just received our grants and they're going to be distributed to our commissioners this week, so I can't really answer that definitively, but I think not.
Sure.
A lot of the people that we fund typically come to us every year.
Right.
And we, every year we also get a few new ones, but.
Gotcha.
And to know who they are. So I don't think any of them are involved.
Gotcha. Thank you. Thank you for being here.
I would just like to say thank you for the presentation as well and I think that, you know, your comments about art being a valued and good for the community is also good not only for the residents, but it also for tourists as we look to expand our, our brand and to have more options and offerings for, for people. It's very helpful. Might also be helpful for the audience and people looking in to sort of get a, a, you know, clear understanding of the W A A C, even though it's Williamsburg Area Arts Commission, it is made up of citizens from Williamsburg and James City County. If you could just sort of address that a little bit about.
Sure. We have four members from Williamsburg and four members from James City County. Those from Williamsburg, raise your hands. Yeah. James City County, those two. And Charles comes to us from York County. So we have nine, nine members to represent the tri-county area.
So it is truly an, an area arts commission looking at opportunities and offerings in, in all three communities?
We don't grant to York County. We, Charles is a, is a, is an advisor to us, although we often grant to the same groups.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. You know, you talked about the, the benefit to youth. What benefits can you talk about in terms of, for especially art and music to dementia patients? And do we have any programs that?
It's an excellent idea. We, we have one group that we have funded in the past, ARC, who has used the arts to speak to people who are eighteen and above, who are severely mentally usually challenged and physically challenged. And, and sometimes we have funded them getting to concerts or going to certain events or events coming to them. But we have yet to entertain anything like that and I think that's an excellent idea. I'd like to see more of that because I think that really, it makes a big difference. I, I have a family member who's got dementia and they bring arts in all the time. So we'd love to review something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Just for clarification so that the community understands, you mentioned that there are a number of groups that come back year after year to request funding from the arts commission, some of which are granted funding year after year and some go in and out of the funding stream, but you do not give ongoing overhead support to any of these groups. It's more project-based on a particular arts program or the delivery of that to the community and they have to make their case each year with a new application.
That's correct. And we actually tell them not to repeat their application, although many of them do similar programming every year. It's, it's fresh, new programming.
Great. Well, thank you very much for sharing this with us today.
Sure.
Thanks also for making us aware of your intention for a request of additional funds in the coming year. I think that's part of your responsibility to advocate for the arts community and as we tell you every year at budget time, we really do greatly appreciate all the work that your committee, the commission does in order to vet these requests and make informed recommendations to council, which saves us a tremendous amount of work. So thank you for that.
We're all about saving you work. Thank you.
Our next background presentation today was to be on the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for Fiscal Year Ending June thirty, two thousand eighteen. Unfortunately, Ms. Wall, who represents our, our auditor, is not able to be with us here today, so we will be postponing that background presentation until our Thursday meeting, assuming she's able to get here then.
That would be our request.
Will we be postponing Ms. Dameron's presentation as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then that concludes our background presentations for today and takes us to City Council Communications. Anybody care to report on a liaison assignment?
Continuing discussions with the Greater Chamber and, Greater Williamsburg Chamber Tourism Alliance. Those discussions are ongoing with regard to the bylaws and all.
No, it's an EDA meeting on Wednesday.
Nothing from me.
And things going well with the Tourism Council?
They are. We meet, think of this week.
Well, I just.
Tomorrow?
Mayor, I didn't, I didn't know if you wanted to hear from.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure. Chief, you want to give us a, a few words on the update on what we experienced yesterday that was a complete and total surprise to many and how you and the entire city team have responded to it?
Yes, sir. And, and obviously, as you mentioned, the snow accumulation was not predicted and I pride myself in looking at various forecasts and obviously none of the forecasts predicted any snowfall for Williamsburg. Typically, Williamsburg's right on that border and it's, it's hard to predict accumulating snowfall. Unfortunately, all the forecasters said we were not going to see any accumulation, so we, we missed it by a few inches. Obviously, it was a heavy wet snow and caused quite a few power outages, trees down, limbs down. We had the fire department responses, they responded to approximately eighty calls in a twenty-four hour period. We had, obviously, police department was involved as well and Public Works did outstanding job with clearing the streets and also clearing the roadways of larger limbs that we couldn't take care of in the fire, fire department. As of right now, there are, yesterday at the peak, we had approximately two thousand customers without power.
That's in the city?
In the city. That's pretty significant when we only have sixty-seven hundred customers. So as of right now, we have twenty-eight projects with two-hundred-and-eighty-one customers. So most of the bigger projects have been taken care of with that number, so we're down to projects that are ten or eleven customers with each project. They're going to take a little longer to, to navigate around the city. One of the most significant areas impacted was Roth Road. They had a pole that was broken from the, a tree pulling on the lines that caused the power pole to snap. Lines were across cars, across the roadways. Obviously, all the Ludwell Apartments were impacted. That, that power has been restored as of this afternoon. The only critical infrastructure we had down during the time was Riverside Doctors Hospital. Well, I guess I could say the second one was the fire chief because he went down when Riverside Doctors Hospital went down, but it was restored within about three hours. So they had contractors in last night. I was in communication with our construction manager from Dominion, who also had a unique experience. He was just transferred to Williamsburg and this was his first weekend assigned to the Williamsburg area, so he had quite a challenge as well. So everything went really well. We, the response by the city was, was extremely coordinated between fire, police, Public Works. We were able to manage all of the calls that were coming in and stack some of the not-so-serious calls and able to cover all the calls either with, with city apparatus or with some mutual aid on other calls.
Considering that this came with basically no notice, the response is really impressive. Do you have, and it, the city's been plowing streets throughout the day. Do you have any idea how successful VDOT's been in our surrounding localities as far as clearing all of those roads?
Yes, I know in the, I've heard in the upper end of James City County that they had a more significant accumulation, that some of the secondary roads are still in, they're hazardous, but much of it was, the roads improved with their, when it transitioned to rain. Obviously, it didn't transition till a much later time than predicted as well, but all of the roads in the city that I've traveled, primary and secondary, are in really great shape. Maybe some freezing tonight with the temperature dropping to twenty-seven, but I know the upper end of the county still had some areas with secondary roads.
So those roads that are slushy right now could very easily turn icy overnight in early morning hours.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chiefs. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Clayton is not here. He's probably out removing trees and clearing streets as we speak, so thanks to Dan and his team as well. Schedule meetings for December two thousand eighteen. Mr. Trivid, anything you want to highlight?
Yes, on December the eleventh, we have Business Roundtable at noon hosted by the EDA, Quarter Path Rec Center. The EDA meeting at three on December the twelfth, our City Council meeting on December the thirteenth, the Planning Commission on December nineteenth, and of course, the city offices will be closed December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
Great. Thank you. This takes us to the open forum portion of our meeting. If anybody would like to address council, please come forward, state your name and address, and if you could keep your comments to five minutes. Mr. Shelley, please come forward. Welcome.
I'm Gary Shelley. I live at two oh five Indian Springs Road. And first off, I'd like to welcome Mr. Trivid on your selection as our new city manager. Congratulations and well-deserved. I hope that my appearances here will bring you some background into our community that perhaps you wouldn't get otherwise and you'll find useful. I had intended today to continue speaking about the one-ten Harrison Avenue issue, but I found it difficult to put my thoughts set down as my neighborhood is one of the ones without power. And I wish to thank the Dominion Power people, the fire and police departments and our city people, I see working very diligently on it. Perhaps I'll have power when I get home tonight. Perhaps I'll have power when I get home tonight. To Mr. Trivid and to Mr. Maslin, a little bit about me. I have been an unabashed and very outspoken supporter of college students throughout the years. Sometimes I felt like I'm alone on an island, but I am privileged to have, to be able to enjoy very close and friendly relationships with students. My appearances here have sometimes been met with contentiousness and denials, and just for a little background, I'd like to bring up one that happened some years ago, but it was a very important appearance that I made, and I brought some issues to the attention of the council that were not met with approval, nor were they agreed upon with what I had to say. We now have the ability to look back on that time from April 2005 and see just how events transpired, and I'll be reading from our official minutes. At, at that meeting, I said that, I believe that, Mr. Shelley believes that students felt that there was an anti-student feeling on the city council, and there's an anti-student attitude regarding rental housing in our neighborhoods. Mr. Shelley referenced a conversation with Mayor Zidler about the students' plight in our town that had to do with voting rights and the right-to-vote controversy. My presentation was not met very well by our vice mayor at that time, and he responded by saying that he personally does not find the attitude that I had been conveyed, that had been conveyed by me. He felt that it does not exist. He said that I misrepresent students in general and students that live in neighborhoods around the college. He said that my comments were not right and cannot stand. He said this continued litany of anti-student attitude, it does not exist. Further, he went on to say that the disservice of what I had to say was that if you look at the channels of communication and relationships between the city and the college and the student body, they're the best that they have been in 30 years. This was in 2005. Mr. Shelley's statements were 180 degrees wrong. The council, staff, and police have done a lot to get a good relationship, the best in 30 years. So, I had one position, and vice mayor had a different one. There's a saying in politics that angry citizens vote. Over the next, course of the next four, four and a half years, issues continually cropped up regarding town-gown relations, voting rights for the students, the three-person rule, the enhanced noise ordinance, the constant evictions, the 110 Harrison Avenue issue that I've been speaking about. There were countless, countless articles in the student newspapers, Virginia Informer, The Flat Hat, regarding our, our pretty sorry town-gown relationships and the anger the students felt toward the city. And as a result of all this, in our election in 2010, angry citizens did vote. Students came out in record numbers and supported a student candidate who received a total far exceeding any total that any candidate ever had before or since. This is just how angry they were, and it seems to support the position that I took, and that I came before the council to relate, and that was unfortunately thrown back in my face, but so be it. So, I bring this to you today in saying that when I appear before you, I come well-prepared, Sorry, I, like I say, we had no power today, and I'm really off some scribbling I made here just before appearing here, but please do keep in mind that students are an important part of this community, and please take them seriously and give them the respect and consideration that they deserve. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Shelley. Would anybody else like to address council today? If so, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll close the open forum, and I believe we have some business to attend to.
We do, sir. I move to go into closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussing one personnel matter per sub-paragraph 1 concerning appointments to boards and commissions.
Second.
Ms. Burgen.
Mr. Maslin.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pons.
Aye.
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
We'll take a brief recess and reconvene in closed session.